Putting the time and the presence of a quorum, I will call tonight's meeting of the Acton Board of Selectmen to order. So as always, we will start with citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens who wish to speak to items not otherwise on the agenda? Yes.
That's Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I have a comment and then a concern. I just want to thank Steve and his whole crew. The DocuShare folder naming conventions are really helpful. They're much more consistent. It's much easier to find things. And the practice of putting the committee, the link to the folder to get the background information actually on the agenda, that's something that they've done for a long time on the Board of Selectmen agendas, but CBA, other committees, I think it's been really helpful for people. And also to the folks at home, there's a button on DocuShare that says the last four days, you can see everything that's been uploaded. I'd love for that to be changed to 30 days, but nonetheless, people can go there and do that. And my concern is about the survey that has been put out. Apparently, the town has hired a consultant to convince us that we need more high-density housing to be able to get the kinds of businesses that we want. And I found the survey to be very biased towards leading you to want to have more development, growth, high-density housing, additional building. So we created our own biased survey. And so people can find that by writing to info@slowvillage.org. And it asks questions like, do you want affordable housing? What would you like to subsidize at the various income levels? And I think that you guys would maybe like to look at this. We have 93 responses so far. It's whether or not we want to continue pushing growth to the villages or not, whether we want to convert existing units. That was, almost 80% said yes. And we had a wide range of respondents. We, well, I don't know exactly who did because it's anonymous, but we have all the IP addresses if you want to do that research. But we advertised on the Acton Forum, the Green Acton List, and online, which is basically officials or ex-officials. So, and everybody's welcome to take it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else with items not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, great. All right, my chairman's update. As a reminder, the Historical Commission will be holding a public forum on their, the Chapter and Demo Delay Bylaw and proposed changes to that this Thursday, June 21st at 7:00 PM in this room. I'm not sure if it will be televised or not, but I encourage people to attend to learn more eventually if the plan is to bring those proposed changes to town meeting either in the fall or next spring. So please attend and have your voice heard on that. There's also this Thursday, the Classical Music in the Park Concert, starting at 6:30 at NARA, and all are welcome to attend that. Hopefully, we'll have much better weather than we're having tonight. And there will be a public outreach meeting on the Main Street and Prospect Street intersection to solicit public input on improvements to that intersection, and that will be on Wednesday, June 27th at 7:00 PM, also in this room. And while we will have a lot more time to celebrate him also on this Thursday, a busy night, I did want to note that it is our town manager, Steve Ledoux's, last meeting as a town manager, or last Board of Selectmen meeting at least, as a town manager, and just to thank him for all of his years of service. He's been the only town manager while I've been on the board and I think has done a wonderful job, and I've really enjoyed my many years of working with him. And I know we all deeply appreciate all of our time with him. And like I said, we'll have more time to celebrate him at his retirement party on the 21st, but I just wanted to note that and say thank you, Steve. And if you have any words you want to add tonight to your town manager update.
Well, thank you. And I want to thank the board because it's, you know, the boards over my 10 years have made my job really easy. I've found all the boards very thoughtful and really, really think about the issues and think about how they affect the citizens. So you guys have made my job easy. And I've actually been very lucky. Over 41 years, I've historically had good boards and worked in good towns. So I've been extraordinarily lucky, and I do appreciate all the support over the years. And, you know, it's, like I said a year ago when I announced my retirement, it's bittersweet. You know, I'm going to be sad about it, but I've got some, you know, new chapters in my life I'll be dealing with, and I'll be hammering nails at the Habitat House on School Street 4th of July week. So that'll be one of the first things I'll be doing. But once again, I want to thank everybody for their support over the years. And just a couple, a couple updates. We are, and police are monitoring, but we're having a lot of issues with the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, particularly bikers not stopping when they're, when they're crossing particularly Concord Road, Brook Street, even, even Main Street over by, over by NARA. They're not, not pushing buttons, they're not using the lights. And so the police have stepped up some monitoring of the situation. Also, we have learned that the, that the state, the horse barn, the old historic house that's over by the State Police Horse Barn, has received an historic preservation grant. And I guess they'll be doing finally some cleanup of that, of that building that's not been in the best shape since then, since, for at least as long as I've been here. We awarded a contract for the, for the rail trail parking at the Ice House Pond. If you've been down Concord Road, some of the, some of the clearing is occurring for that. We're also winding up the end of the fiscal year and trying to get a sense of where we might end up free cash-wise. And if you remember, when we, when we talked about the gas hookup for the Habitat property on School Street, I think it was last meeting, it was mentioned that there was a significant gas leak in that area. We've, National Grid is, we'll be replacing the gas line from, on School Street, from Maine to Chadwick. So that, that is happening. So that's good news. And finally, you may have noticed outside here, and also the train station, we are installing charging stations for the, for electric cars. And that's my report.
All right, well, good final report. A lot of good news. So thank you. And again, you'll, we are going to miss you a lot, but excited for new chapters for you, and we'll see where the town goes from here, so.
Save the bad news for Mr. Mangirati the next meeting.
Yeah, exactly. His first report can be a real downer. Okay, we're not quite at 7:10, so I'm going to hold off on reading that briefly, and we will do the consent agenda. So I'll read through those, and please say hold if you have anything you'd like to hold. Number seven, the letter of support for a grant from the Division of Fish and Wildlife's River Ecological Restoration Fund for 53 River Street. Number eight, the request to dispose of obsolete, yes, Jim? Do you have a question?
When you get to the part about new road construction connections, I'd like to, I'd like that someone hold that if possible.
Yes, you have to ask a member to hold it. Generally, it's better to ask us beforehand, and otherwise to do it maybe during citizens' concerns. I will hold it tonight, though.
Thank you.
But in the future, helpful to email. Okay, number eight, request to dispose of obsolete items at Acton Memorial Library. Number nine, farmer winery license for Pony Shack Cider for the Acton Boxborough Farmers' Market. Number 10, a one-day alcoholic beverage license for Cory Loder, NARA Park, July 1st, 2018. Number 11, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Francis Bean, NARA Park, July 15th, 2018. Number 12, one-day alcoholic beverage license, House Rabbit Network, NARA Park, July 29th, 2018. Number 13, committee appointments, Vivian Virchell and Jin Hong Yang, full members of the Acton Boxborough Cultural Council. Number 14, committee appointment, Chung Shen Fu, full member of the Council on Aging. Number 15, committee appointment, Nirapenu Velankar, associate member of the Council on Aging. Number 16, committee appointment, R. Luke Evans, full member of the Transportation Advisory Committee. Number 17, committee appointment, Yi Emily Ying, associate member of the Board of Appeals. Number 18, the roadway construction requests, which I'll hold. And number 19, accept gift recreation department, a gift totaling $250 in donations for funding a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. Do you want to briefly address number 18, Jim?
I come back to you guys every time there's a new gas connection. So this isn't anything new. I guess there's some little bit of new information this time. The connections to Liberty Street and to Anthem Village, down there in the Maple Martin area, hold some of Acton's remaining largest gas leaks. So I'm happy to report that Cory was quickly responsive when I asked him about this, and was able to report that the gas company is considering working on one leak there and working on replacing an entire main there. It's important. It's an old coated steel main from the 60s, I think, unless it's one of the ones from the 30s. It's real old. It's very leaky. The only other thing, the only other one here that I wanted to call out, and just so that you're aware of the context of all this, is one at 2 Huron Road in Indian Village. Indian Village is a place where, over the next decades, we're playing a slow but important chess game there. Some of Indian Village has gas connections. Some of Indian Village has fuel oil. Now that the technology is there for people to go right from fuel oil to modern air-source heat pumps, this is the direction we want to find some way of bringing them to, rather than paying the extra fees for bringing gas lines to their houses. I think I've said all this before. This is a vote, which means you can vote for it or against it. There's consequences either way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Okay, are there any questions or comments from members of the board?
Yeah, I just have one question. At one point, we were considering a bylaw that would require the gas company to fix leaks within a certain radius of new lines they were installing. Has there been any progress on that, or do we know where that is?
Right, so we were considering a bylaw that was similar to Boston's bylaw, which they passed and has been challenged in court. So it's a little bit on hold while we watch that, and also while we work on finalizing the sustainability policy. So the thought was to not move forward with that bylaw until we have the sustainability policy in place, and then to consider either that bylaw or other bylaw options. So we are still talking about it, but it's not ready yet. Is that, yes, briefly, because we don't know.
Just FYI, the CLF lawyers, I've been corresponding with them, and they're going to get me the materials to look at the Boston case, and they agree that there are ways to reconstruct something else that comes at it in a different direction. Also, I think you had said at one point that you thought that Cory, or whoever talks to the gas company, would have a lot luck, or more luck, if they said something. And I think Janet said something like, if he can let them know that we're planning to get this done and take stronger action, or they can take it themselves or something. I can't remember exactly what Janet said, but Cory's here, and so I'd like to re-understand what that was, that we were saying, that we might be able to do.
Sure, I don't want to get into huge back and forth, so briefly, Janet.
I didn't, you know, I didn't say threaten them. I just said that maybe, you know, we, we could take firmer action if they weren't cooperative in making repairs in the areas where we're doing extensions. But I didn't, certainly wasn't alluding at all to the sort of Boston sort of ordinance mimicking that had been discussed earlier, so.
Yeah, and I think some of the comments I made were around that, which is that they have already taken notice due to a lot of the steps we've already taken, which is why we're seeing a lot of these being fixed, as well as the relationship Cory's built with them. So frankly, at this point, having a more cordial relationship is getting more things where they know we also have the education information out there, I think, is getting a lot more done. Okay, but with that, and if there are no other comments from board members, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, two moves. Janet seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all right, so then we'll go back to the 7:10 PM traffic rules and orders for Strawberry Hill Road parking prohibition, and we have a memo from the Chief of Police in our packet, but I believe Cory is here to talk about that tonight. And Cory, since you're here for a million things, if you want, just sit up there. That would be perfect.
As you mentioned, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Police and Fire. They requested to have a park and prohibition on Strawberry Hill Road. The section that they were looking at runs from Great Road down to Estabrook. They've, I guess they've been dealing with some on-street parking. The police had some concerns as you're looking down the street with on-street parking and sort of the sightlines along the road were, with the sections that are narrow or have some bends in them. The fire department's concerns mostly revolved around if there's parking on one side of the road, getting in, in and out of apartments. They had concerns they might not be able to get their larger apparatus in and out. So the request that we had before the board tonight would be a prohibition on both sides from Great Road to Estabrook. We do have a resident at 39 who is opposed to prohibition near their home for concerns about when they have guests or parties, that they wouldn't be allowed to have people parked on the street. And they had some other concerns relative to speeding and just general traffic on the road itself. So I think that was the, the only concern that I had. I believe a representative from Rapsgalian might be here tonight as well to speak on their behalf, so.
Great, thank you, Cory. Are there any initial questions or comments from board members? John?
Hear comments from, and then we could ask questions.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Please just go up to the mic and state your name and where your, your address.
Okay, Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I like the idea of parking on the road. Part of our master plan is focused on preserving rural character. I feel like these parking bans that are popping up all over the town are urbanization. I also feel like these small business owners, whether you like them or not, I feel like we need to do what we can for small business owners, not make it more difficult for their customers. If you've ever gone to that location, it, the parking lot fills up really quickly. I feel like we should be establishing parking there, you know, if I write, and let people park there. So that's it, thanks.
Okay, anybody else?
Hi, I'd like to say.
Can you say your name and address, please?
Sorry, my name is Nihar Sinapati. I'm from 29 Strawberry Hill Road.
Okay.
I got this motion, but I was not very clear. Does it prevent the residents to also, if they're guests from the residence, let's say there is a party, birthday party or something, there are six or eight cars coming in, and obviously, all the driveways are not equipped to handle the eight, nine cars, so a few cars might be parking along the road. Would that be okay? If, if, does this motion allow for that kind of exigencies?
No, under this proposal, it's a, it's a parking prohibition for everyone along that stretch of the road.
Okay. Well, then, I think there should have been, because there is, there is a commercial traffic at the entry point of the road, but that should not really put the other residents at convenience, at inconvenience, because the commercial traffic, as everybody here knows, has been creating a lot of nuisance in terms of the traffic congestion and obstruction, as well as the indiscipline. And that should not really put the residents at the inconvenience. But if somebody, if a resident like me has to choose between the two avenues, then I would support the traffic prohibition, and with the exception that if there is a clause that allows for the residents to park on occasional situations.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm not sure if we can write the rules, how, how we would exactly allow an exemption like that, because you'd have to have some sort of guest permit system or something. Otherwise, it would be hard to know, you know, when a resident's having a party and that's why a car is there versus a car is there for. But maybe you could think about the timing of it, perhaps.
Yeah, you can think about the timing, for example. That could be, that'd be a good idea. And because there are, there are patterns for the restaurants and other commercial establishments. Obviously, they come in every day except for one or two days of closer time, closer days. But for the residents, it will be usually weekends, so that is very occasional. So some kind of timing or some kind of conditionality can be reflected in, and that will really help the residents along the road.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
David Dedrickson, 25 Lincoln Drive. I'm also a member of the EDC Committee and a former business owner in town for 25 years at Willow Books. My, my business side feels very strongly that we need to do whatever we can to support small businesses. It's difficult enough. Sometimes even a small change in your business condition can be enough to tip you over the edge, and I think we want to encourage small businesses. So my initial concern with this is, is for the small businesses that will be affected. But in looking at it, I mean, it seems to me, we're talking about making something permanent that was kind of arbitrarily put in place by an unelected official, sorry. It seems to me like that road's been there for like over 100 years, and people managed to get back and forth. We understand that it's a cut-through road, that people won't avoid the rotary, and I get that. I think there's a case to be made for a study of the traffic conditions to see, you know, what things could and could not be done, what exceptions could be made for certain residents or certain occasions. I'm just concerned with the process here, because as I understand it, this was all brought about by a single complaint by a citizen, and then was brought forward to the police chief, who has the authority to put a temporary ban in on his own, on his decision, you know. And it may be, in fact, that that is a good thing to do in this road, but it may also be that it's an arbitrary decision that shouldn't be rushed into. You're going to affect a lot of people on a rate, road that is used by a lot of businesses and residents. And I just think, just rushing into making it official just because somebody, just some one person said, yeah, it seems unsafe to me after all these years, I think that's the wrong way to go. I think it sends a very bad message to people all over the town, and also to the businesses that are, you know, feeling, you know, might feel a little bit victimized and singled out. And I can think of many other places in town where you could, you know, apply the same standards. And so maybe it would be a good idea to establish those standards, figure out what things we really do look at, not just, can somebody, can I have a permit once in a while for something? I mean, it might be a good idea to actually study those places in town where you might want to consider a permanent ban. I just think that the process of having one person come in and go, I don't like it, make it a temporary ban, and then just rubber stamping it and ramming it through just seems the wrong way to go to me.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak? Yep, here's Blackup.
Hi, my name is Peter. I'm here on behalf of Rapsgalian. I guess to follow up the two prior people. Unfortunately, I've been here a few times probably in the last few years in front of you folks. This one, you know, I guess, as much as it can be discouraging, some of the things that happened over the years, this one, you know, we're all about safety at that location as we are there seven days a week. Our employees, you know, we have 50 employees, not all of them work at that location, but we have dozens of employees daily who cross over Strawberry Hill Road and Great Road to go to Donalands, where we park our employee lot, because the Gould family, which is another terrific business family here in this community, allows us to park there. So when we bring up concerns over the years of safety in us crossing Great Road and Strawberry Hill Road, and we've actually had the incident reports, we have the facts, we've seen accidents there firsthand, we've called first responders first hands ourselves from the 5 Strawberry Hill address on accidents that are created through cut-through, not on, not on behalf of Rapsgalian. But when we raise those concerns, there's, you know, there's very little feedback. We've had some support in some of the committees, Selby's committees, and Rollins Department actually say, that's great and all, but, you know, it's just an email. So when I hear that this was brought up by a neighbor who lives two-plus miles, he lives past Pope Road, way up on the, on the hill, I don't know, I don't, I don't believe he's here tonight. So if it was brought up by him, you know, I just don't understand the argument. So yes, we do park on the side of Strawberry Hill a handful of times a month. We're not going to deny that. We have 30 parking spots and 75-seat capacity, occupancy license, which the fire departments, building departments, and town of Acton submitted. And this goes back to my father-in-law, who's had a restaurant there since 1969, or I'm sorry, '76, who's here tonight as the landlord. So again, it's, you know, I get these things, and I think as David says, we're just business owners trying to do community thing, employ people, move forward, and, and these things constantly come up, and, and we want to go the right way, and I, I think he's got a point, you know? The police chief and Cory, they have every right apparently to do what they like, but to me, I scratch my head and I don't see, you know, facts or reports, or it's just kind of like, okay, maybe, you know, maybe they don't like that corner of the street, maybe they don't like the opera, who knows? They say, let's put up temporary signs. So I've had a lot of neighbors, including the one you posted up there. We have another couple neighbors on Lady Slipper who have sent me emails, and I can forward those. So I feel like there's, you know, they're happy, the few times a month we do park, I would say five to 10 cars on that one side, because it does slow down traffic. That's a very busy cut-through. And again, I don't sound like a broken record, but we're there every day. I'm there, I park sometimes. We always have a dedicated parking person there. So the argument of emergency vehicles not getting by, I just, I mean, I'm there. If I'm not parking there, I have an employee there, and we always go off to left. There's substantive space for emergency vehicles to get through, and the traffic's much slower. So I think, I don't know why the gentleman on Strawberry Hill Road, I believe his name's Mr. Vio, complained as he lives two miles up. The only thing I can think of is when we do park on that side of Strawberry Hill, the few cars we park there, sometimes because it's so busy, you have to wait a little before a car gets around. If the worst, you know, I'd rather be safe at that corner and not have a fatality that could happen one day versus just having to wait two minutes for a car to get around another car as there's two-way traffic. That I do see as annoying, but again, we have a parking person there, and we usually make it pretty seamless. So until we, you know, internally find another solution, you know, we, again, we're going to have to use those, possibly those spots a few times a month. And that's, I think, all I have, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Yep.
Rihanna Linoy, 19 Strawberry Hill Road. I am in favor of the parking ban. It has been lovely having, to be able to pull out of my driveway without any areas of concern of getting T-boned, because I can't see around cars. It's more than just once or twice a month, it was happening on a daily basis, that cars were parking on the street. They were parking on both sides. Employees are parking on the street right across from my driveway, right in front of my driveway, where we came down to find out if it was an employee, because it had a broken window. My boyfriend was going to call the cops because he thought the car had been broken into. But it's an employee that pretty much parks there daily. But it's no longer been happening, and it's been enjoyable.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, again, this is Nihar from 29 Strawberry Hill Road. I think you brought a good point, and like, unfortunately, I couldn't enforce that in my previous communication. Past few days, it has been blissful. And we don't want to get that, we don't want that piece to get disrupted again by allowing the traffic on both sides of the road. It is for everybody who goes through a Strawberry Hill Road, and I can get the signature enough. And people, some people are not here, some people have already shared the videos, the pictures, that is with the Town Planning Department. And we don't, the peace that has prevailed in, for the last few days, don't want to, I don't want that piece to go away or fade away. Just for the benefit of the few or one or two establishments there. This is, this is my humble request, to consider the residents' peace, safety, and the kids that are living along the Strawberry Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, okay.
I'm just wondering if there's a way to, like, actually establish some spots off to the side of the road and maybe slow the speed limit, because the people are screaming through there. And I can't imagine if that's pleasant for anybody except for the speeder. And I think that we have the right to reduce the speed limits, and so it's something we could do. Thank you.
Great. Okay, sure, yep.
I would be in favor if there were established sections.
I would be in favor if there were established sections of you can park from this corner to that corner and on one side of the street. I think that would be acceptable as a compromise for the safety of the residents getting in and out of their driveway and not getting killed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, questions or comments from board members? Joan?
Yeah, Cory, why both sides? Why not just one side?
The police department was concerned about sort of one-way traffic getting through in the sightlines around curves and the sort of the knoll. The fight department was concerned about turning radiuses in and out of the apartments. I assume that would be more, probably more to do with vehicles parked on, let's say, the sort of the Concord side. Because that would limit their ability, proximity of cars parked on the other side closer would maybe limit the turning radius, but I would think more so would be on the, on the town of Concord side of Strawberry would be their concern.
Okay, John?
For Mr. Daniel, please, if he might step.
So, so normally we don't, it's not, we're not in a courtship, so we don't, we can't command people to stand up. If you have a question, you can ask it and if somebody in the audience wants to answer it, I allow it, I can. But we're not, we're no longer in a court.
Well, you, you could read if it's a proper. You had stated that it's only a couple of times a month that your customers park on Strawberry Hill Road.
Yeah, I would conservatively say once a week, but no more.
Okay.
But I think if you look at the track record, it's probably fewer than that. But, you know, I want to put facts and have humility, like the lady there, I mean, I, I agree that we need it to be safe when you get it in your driveway, but if we're concerned about a parked car, which I know for sure, I'm sure it was a customer, employees have a strict policy and I'm, I'm there every day. So unless, please feel free to give me their name and their license plate if you can supply that. But, but I will say a hundred percent sure, I'm sure it was a customer, but I think a parked car, to me, I'd be a little more concerned about safety, about a commuter cut-through, cars flying through there at fifty-six miles per hour versus a parked car. But I would think a parked car would slow traffic down. But I, I, yes, your answer, sorry.
In, in terms of your customers parking there, the once a week, what days of the week is, would that generally be?
It, it's, it's tough. It's really when we have like, again, it's thirty parking spots at the restaurant and we have capacity for seventy-five. So if we have a company party, for instance, where you have twenty business people, they're, they're not going to carpool most likely, so they all take their own car and then we have a busy night. So, when it does happen, it's usually a Friday night or a Saturday night. Those are the only two nights it happens and I, and I think it is, it would be a good compromise and that's what we're, we were looking forward to seeing, reports, facts. If maybe we allocate three or four spots on the right side so we, we don't get in the way of the lady that owns, who is just up here that's on nineteen or we're not in the way of the gentleman who, who lives on twenty-nine. It's very rare that it goes that far up on Strawberry Hill Road. It's usually right at the corner as you turn, right? And, you know, we're not, you know, and that's the one corner I would think too, we'd want cars to slow down in, in safety because we've had some accidents there over the last few years. And, and again, I know, you know, I keep saying this, but we, you know, we have a strict policy, all our employees park at Donalins. You can look at the Camfries, you can speak with the Gould family. So we, we cross that road, both roads, Great Hill Road and Strawberry Hill Road daily. So it's, it's been a concern, especially later at night when it's dark out, really any time of the day, especially during a commuter cut-through. So I, I find the irony that, you know, I've got no problem with NIMBY personalities and it's going to happen, right? It's, but when we have a, you know, I will listen to a NIMBY personality if we can all look at it from both sides. And the irony is some of these same people who don't want cars there based on safety come flying through that intersection. So apparently it's, they just want it at their convenience and maybe not at the safety of others. So if we can all kind of look at this from both sides, maybe we can come to a solution.
So, so on those Fridays and Saturdays that you will have customer parking on Strawberry, on Strawberry Hill Road, how many parkers would you have on average or what would be the range?
Yeah, so we, we always have a, and on our staff schedule, we literally schedule our front of the house, pack of the house, run our bus or expo and we actually have a title for parker. So that, that's how serious obviously we take this. So we have someone every day there. If that person's not there, I'm, as the owner, I'm there parking cars. So every time I'm there, when we've had these handful of times a month where we do need to park on one side of Strawberry Hill Road, again, I would say no more, you know, there, don't get me wrong, there was a few times in the last four years where it went all the way up the street. And I remember Household Goods had a big annual charity, Nature Connection had a big annual charity. So when we do these big annual charity events where we literally have all these people come and do, sometimes we do Dave Berners, sometimes we, they just, you know, take the whole, we close to the public and they take the whole house over, you know, that's seventy-five different cars coming. So those few times a year, I've seen them go as far as twenty-nine past Dean Crook's house. So, you know, I've never seen him at the corner of, at the fork way up, but I do know a handful of times in the last four years, we've had more than ten. But, sorry, the long, short answer is it's, it's rarely past ten that we have on that side.
And you would have a, an assistant on duty out there to?
Absolutely. We, we always have someone there. They're in, you know, the reflection gear at nighttime and, but there, there's always someone parking. It, it rarely goes on, you know, and it's for our business as well. And that's, the part of the whole problem is I normally wouldn't mind if we had a safe way to cross Strawberry Hill Road in a, in overflow parking lot that the town would approve. But part of the whole reason why I'm, I'm asking just for this, well, one for the temporary signs to come down and, and no permanent signs is there are a few times a month that we, we need these extra spots. It's that or I turn away customers. And as a small business and I, and I know when Mr. Vio, who, who lives on the Castle Hill, called me, he said, oh, you're doing so great down there. And it's like, you know, I'm glad he knows my business very well, but, you know, we have Tuesdays, Wednesdays, we have no one coming in, you know, we're not in the city. Our lunches are going to be slow. So it's not like, you know, everything's gravy, you know, biz, we're full house every day of the weeks, you know, set twenty-four, seven. It's, it's just not accurate or factual. So those few nights I have a private party and maybe, you know, those are the few nights that maybe I could be at full capacity. We need those nights. We need those Friday, Saturday nights to, to keep going. So those are the few times if we have to turn customers away, we turn them away with permanent parking, that's fine. You know, we've, we've kind of rolled with the punches here with the town and, you know, we're not, we're not.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're not complaining, it's just, you know.
Okay, thank you. So I see some people wanting to speak. I'm just going to say this and this is why we don't normally do this. So unless you have something drastically new to say, I understand that there are differences in opinion into how frequently this happens and how many cars there are and, and we all recognize that. So unless you have something that's completely new, but first I'm going to let other board members speak. So Janet.
I live up on the hill off of Strawberry Hill Road, but I have a, a good view out of my house, of Mr. Vio's house, so I know where he lives. I would guess, no, the parking situation doesn't affect him where he's, his residence is, but it certainly is going to affect him if he's driving down Strawberry Hill Road as I do to go anywhere. There have been some nights, I often have meeting nights, night meetings every, every three nights in a row. And I know starting Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the, the cars start lining up on the streets. And, and I, my one thought is, okay, first of all, I think that your business obviously needs more parking for the customers that you draw. It's great that your business is doing well. The parking is an issue. I think that for residents, when there are special parties and things like that, people do typically spill out onto the streets where they live. In the case of Strawberry Hill Road, that's Strawberry Hill Road. But, you know, if that's an occasional thing, it would be good if we could have some flexibility to allow for people who are residential to be able to go out on the road, understanding that it's maybe once a year. And if they're smart, they're going to, they're going to schedule their parties in fair weather when there isn't a big snowbank that's pushing the car, you know, in the middle of the road and creating an obstacle, traffic obstacle. I am concerned about other residents and that their driveways be unblocked. They should be able to get in and out of their driveways without being impeded by badly parked cars along the street. So I am sort of thinking that a solution where you had a section of street where it was okay to park on one side of the street, not in the winter, would be one possible less harsh solution. The trouble is, is in the winter because I, it will be impossible to allow people to park on one side of the street because then you have a very narrow lane, which will be difficult for even a small car like mine to get through. If you have, if we had snow piled up on either side, then it would be incumbent on the town to clear everything to the, to the, you know, to the side, to the walls or whatever it is that's on the side of the streets. And that's really not, it shouldn't be the, the town's obligation to clear the, the streets so that you can have parking on the street when it's clearly not safe to do that. I mean, all the overflow customers would have to park in Donalins, assuming that they're willing to have people park there. So, I mean, I see a lot of issues. I have been, and this is all in fair weather where the parking is along the street. I have come down Strawberry Hill Road where there were cars parking on, well, on the restaurant side of the street and I've had to wait for the car, a car coming out of the parking lot, the regular parking lot, to get out and another car to get in and then so that, and then the traffic to clear so I could get by the parked cars to make my way. Coming back from a meeting, I remember one time, I was stuck on Great Road. I couldn't, I couldn't turn onto Strawberry Hill Road because there was a backup of cars dealing, coming out of the parking lot, going in. You know, it, it was just a problem and it would be good if we could figure out a way to solve that. I do think that if we took a little more time to study what's going on there and consider all the needs of the business and the neighbors, I think it would be, and, and the people who have to use. You know, I'm not driving there through-street. It's the way I go to get to Town Hall and a lot of other places in town. I'm not using it as a pass-through, believe you me, if I, there are people who commute who use it and they fly, you know, they fly up Strawberry Hill Road speeding much faster than that narrow road would allow. But, you know, it is a narrow road and so you have to consider, it's not like Mass Ave where there's, there's room for parking on the sides of the road and everything. We barely have room for sidewalks on parts of Strawberry Hill Road. So, so I would suggest a little more time. I mean, I would be happy to provide comments about what I've observed as somebody who uses the road and lives some distance away, but is sympathetic to the business and the residents. I don't think it's acceptable, as one person said, to have parking on the sides of the road unrestricted because it is, it is a narrow road. And if you don't have to use that road every day, you have no idea how, it's dangerous, it's inconvenient and it's not acceptable as far as I'm concerned for everyday use. But anyhow, I'd like to have a little more flexibility to allow for, say, exceptions. And I don't know if there's, if we were to set aside a portion of the road for parking and that proved not to be sufficient, if then we could, I don't know if there's a permit, you know, special permit where you're allowed and you have, all, all of the guests have to have placards to show that they're allowed to park temporarily there for, I don't know, four hours or whatever the duration is, something like that. But I, I think it's not, we're not going to solve the problem by just banning all the parking because, you know, I would like to be supportive of the business. I would also note that the business does, you know, it's the kind of business it is. Parking lots, a small parking lot. It was great when it was a quaint little French restaurant where you didn't have all the traffic all week, especially at night. But it's a different kind of a business. It draws a different, on a different audience and there are just a lot of cars. So, you know, I want to be supportive of the business, but I also am very sympathetic to the residents in that area. So, that's, so I'm saying, don't, don't decide anything tonight, so.
Okay, Peter?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Cory to have you done any traffic counts or anything out there? Do we, what kind of information do we have about what the average speed is or what, how much traffic goes through Strawberry Hill Road?
The town engineer did a traffic study, I think about a year or probably a couple of years ago. It was further up the street by number seventy-five, I think it was. The eighty-fifth percentile speed up that way was about thirty-seven miles an hour. And I think there was a little over two thousand cars a day that drove down that stretch.
So two thousand a day, does that make it a main artery or a feeder road or?
Makes it in the range of a, a collector road, something like, like you'd see Willow Street, streets like that where you see.
That's a pretty, I assume that's a pretty high number. Considering other roads in town, whatever, two thousand a day is, is a pretty high number, right?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at something like Main Street for comparison, in the center here, you're probably talking in the neighborhood of eighteen thousand. Like I said, Willow Street. Trying to think of other streets that might be in that range, but it's a lot of those connector roads, probably the upper section of Parker Street where it's feeding into the, your, people are using them to get to someplace, probably, I would assume Piper Road, roads like that, yep.
Okay, and, and this is actually the first time I've heard of a police chief's emergency authority, I guess, to ban parking. How, when did that go into effect and how long, how long does it stay in effect?
He has the ability to put up the temporary parking signs, but, yeah.
You know, I, I, the first thing I got to say is Chief Burrows, and now I hear Chief Hart has weighed in on this, are top-notch professionals. They, their responsibility is to protect the public safety in town. They don't make decisions based on whether they like intersections, they don't like intersections, and they, I would bet, don't make decisions about one complaint from somebody who lives two miles away from Rapschallion. So their business is to protect the public safety in town. And I would depend on their opinion about whether banning parking is going to make the street less safe or not because people are going to go faster down the road than somebody who is a non-expert in the, in the, in the traffic field. So I got to stick up for our public safety officials. They make the right decisions for the public safety of the town. So, on the other hand, there's not a lot of information we have here. We have nothing from Chief Hart. We have one memo of two paragraphs from Chief Burrows that says, I believe, for the safe passage of pedestrian, bicyclists and motorists in that area, that vehicles should not be allowed to park on the side of the road between Great Road and Esteban Road. So I, I do agree that there, there ought to be more information provided before we make a final decision, I guess, on this. And what, what kind of facts are they basing this on that, that, you know, they're making this recommendation, not just Chief Burrows, but Chief Hart too? If he thinks that emergency vehicles are in danger, you know, getting to places they need to get on Strawberry Hill Road because cars are parked there, we should know that. But as, as far as the, having a party on the street, maybe we give the chief discretion. People like Janet says, there's kind of a special permit. He has some kind of standards, you know, depending on the conditions, the type of, the time of the year, whether there's snow piles along the side of the road, how many cars people are expected to be parked on the side of the road, what hours, you know, is it two or three hours, four hours, five hours? If there are too many cars and it creates a public safety, maybe he could require, require the, the person who's giving the party to hire a police detail or something like that. That's, that's one thought I had, but I think we need a little more information, but in a time being, for the time being, if the chief thinks there ought to be no parking on either side, I would keep that in place until we make a decision.
Thank you, Peter. I, I agree with your remarks. I, I was really disappointed by sort of veiled things said against the police chief and fire chief and Cory about how their decisions are made because they're not made in, you know, just out of their own minds or because of one person calling them. That's not true. These people work to promote the public safety in our town and that's exactly what they were trying to do in this situation. But I also agree that, you know, I think we could go back and get more information and, and talk to the chiefs and understand if there is a compromise about perhaps it's, you know, only allowing it on part of one side of the road, you know, for certain times of years, as Janet suggested. But I don't know what, what part of the road that would be to still allow the, you know, fire truck turning capacity and things like that. So I think the chiefs need to weigh in on, on that. And if there is some sort of, you know, temporary permit you could get for your guests or something like that, but I, creating a whole new program like that is, could be very difficult. So I don't know if that's worthwhile, but I think if we go back and look at it a little bit more, that would be my inclination. Get a little bit more information and see if there's sort of a compromise solution there that the chief still, still feel would, you know, allow for the safety of that roadway, but without completely banning traffic on both sides of it all, all times of the year. So that would be my recommendation. Yes, John?
Yeah, it seems like there's, you know, two levels of issues. A longstanding concern that Strawberry Hill is a cut-through street in the morning and in the evening with lots of cars. in the evening with lots of cars going at high speeds back and forth. And then there's a, a second level of issue, um, with Rapschallian, and let's try to keep that in perspective. I'm certainly a supporter of, of local businesses and all of the good work that Peter and his brother, you know, have done, um, with their, with their, um, pub, um, that we're looking at really Friday and Saturday, um, I guess, late afternoons, evenings, um, street parking maybe as many as, you know, ten people parked with the assistance of a parking attendant. So I would, I would join with my, uh, colleagues, and let's defer on any action tonight and see if we could get some further information, um, from the fire chief and the police chief.
Okay, great. Joan, you had something to add?
Yeah, no, I just would be in favor of parking on one side of the street at certain times.
Okay. Um, okay, so it sounds like, maybe Cory, I don't think we have to take a vote, but if you could go back and see if there's some sort of compromise plan and bring it back. Um, and I agree with Peter, it's up to the police chief's discretion about whether or not to keep those temporary bans in place, um, in terms of the safety, and I'm supportive of that, um, in the meantime. But do you feel like you have a good sense of kind of what we're looking for, or hoping to maybe see for next time? Okay, great, excellent, thank you. All right, and you are up, uh, again, for the Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Just going to introduce, uh, this is Ann Hirst, she works for the MAPC. Uh, the town, when we entered into this process of updating our hazardous mitigation plan, uh, we partnered with the MAPC to help us through the process. So, uh, Ann's been our main point of contact, that's really helped us along and kept it moving, so I'll hand it over to her to go through.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. As Cory said, I've been working with a team of town staff, led by Cory and also including Selby, uh, to, to update the town's hazard mitigation plan. Uh, it is a plan that needs to be renewed every five years, according to FEMA, who oversees the process. Uh, and, uh, again, the MAPC's been providing technical assistance to revise the plan. And feel free to ask questions if you have them as I go along. Do I need to?
Uh, somewhere?
There. I need to hit the right thing. Okay. Um, so the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act was passed in two thousand, and it set a goal for every municipality across the country to have a hazard mitigation plan. It's a goal, it's not actually a requirement, uh, but FEMA does have a, a carrot for compliance, and that is that in order to be eligible for FEMA mitigation grants, towns have to have the hazard mitigation plan. And many towns haven't participated in FEMA grant programs, but Acton has received a grant for culvert replacement, uh, at Summer Road, and, and actually grants to do this, this plan originally and, and to renew it this time. And in each instance, FEMA has paid seventy-five percent of the cost. Um, so this is a plan that addresses all kind of natural hazards. I think it's nice to be on our night when, uh, we're having thunderstorms and tornado warnings in Western Mass, it's perfectly appropriate. Um, you have other kinds of plans for chemical spills or terrorism, this is really about, about natural issues. Uh, and before this, there was really no way to look comprehensively at every natural hazard. So flooding is typically the most common, uh, but we look at things like high winds and tornadoes, um, winter storms with snow and ice, uh, even earthquakes and landslides, which are very low probability, but not zero probability. Uh, drought, for example, is unusual, but we had a significant one in twenty sixteen that can tend to lead to brushfire impacts. Um, this isn't cooperating that well with me. Um, so basically, the, the impetus for the plans is that across the country FEMA was seeing that there was this cycle of, of disaster with rebuilding, and then the same disaster, the same damage, and rebuilding in the same place. Um, so the goal really of these plans is to interrupt that cycle. Um, disasters are really costly, both to taxpayers and private citizens, um, they often, often involve a lot of human suffering, so it's important to analyze our vulnerabilities and, and address them before the next disaster. Um, so essentially, uh, MAPC and its role has, has probably provided updates for eighty-five communities in our region. We provide the technical assistance, uh, the work that is really, uh, the, the key part of the work is working with town staff. They're the ones who provide the, the important information that, that makes the plan meaningful. Um, so we provide, we channel sort of information that town staff are able to provide into the FEMA required format, populate it with the information that FEMA requires. Um, we hold two public meetings, this is the second one, I appeared before the Conservation Commission, uh, in April. Uh, so we now have a full draft plan, it's on the town's website, I'll, I'll show that link at the end of my presentation. Anybody who's interested, uh, can submit comments, uh, when it's finalized in the next couple of weeks, we submit it to FEMA. They do a review, uh, MEMA does a first-level review, FEMA does a second-level review, and then it actually comes back to you, the, the board, for final approval. Uh, so, um, essentially, what we're looking to do is ID hazards and specifically map them to the town. So we do start with higher-level regional data, and then, and then work down to the town level for local information. Uh, so these are the, are the kinds of hazards you'll see mapping, and we'll be able to provide, uh, those maps in, in GIS use for the town, for any other use you might have for them, with other kinds of planning. Uh, and obviously, we're, again, we're looking at, at everything from geology to wind and snow. Um, and then, we also look at patterns of development, uh, some future development may be in flood areas, some not. The land use team developed this list of, of potential upcoming development. It's obviously just a snapshot in time, but it's an opportunity to look at how those places relate to flood zones. I will note that this shows sort of percentage, uh, in a flood zone. That means the, the full parcel itself, it might not mean the actual building, depending on what's happening there. Uh, we also, uh, worked with the town to identify all sorts of critical facilities, that includes disaster response sites, sites that could need services, places where people gather, and again, that's mapped and then overlaid with hazard areas. Um, so this is the full list of mitigation measures already in existence, and I certainly won't try and read them to you, but I did really want to give you a sense of the breadth of work that the town does in an ongoing way. Things from enforcing regulations to infrastructure projects, to ongoing maintenance, land protection, public education, um, the town is just really by no means starting with a blank slate, and, and certainly this is already a, a second plan. Uh, and then, these are the new or continuing measures that the team chose to put in, in the next five-year plan, it's really the heart of the work. Um, you can see they're, they're classified by threat, and so projects might be physical infrastructure, they might be a regulatory strategy, uh, having to do with land use. Some projects, like stormwater management, will have other benefits for the town, for example, around compliance with MS four stormwater requirements. Uh, and one thing I noticed, that the team added a new goal to the hazard mitigation plan this year, and that's to consider future climate impacts. Um, so things like flooding and drought and extreme temperature are predicted to become more frequent and severe in the future, so strategies to address those concerns will help Acton be more resilient as, as potential weather conditions, uh, become more severe. Uh, the team also participated in Acton's, uh, recent municipal vulnerability preparedness workshop. Um, that workshop was also coordinated by Cory York, um, and the final suggestion in the slide, uh, about, uh, improving emergency communication is one that did come directly from, from out of that workshop, that was a high concern of the participants. Um, so next steps, as I said, is, is really to go through a review process, uh, the, the draft plan will be on the town's website, uh, until July first, uh, and people can submit comments during that time. Um, MEMA and FEMA will let us know if there are revisions needed, uh, but at some point, we'll circle back to you to ask for your final approval tonight, as simply for information, uh, FEMA wants the last step to be your approval once they have finally reviewed the plan. Um, and then also to note that, that it is a five-year plan, but, but FEMA really wants it to be a living plan, and so there's a, sort of a, a maintenance, uh, protocol in the plan that involves reviewing it, and, and the process of, of updating it is somewhat lengthy. Um, so really, starting to look at it probably in the fourth year, in order to, to always have a plan in place will be necessary. Um, and then, this is, uh, I just wanted to be able to show the, the link for where the plan is, uh, and again, I'll take comments, uh, by email or, or by phone, any other way, uh, up until July first, uh, and I'm happy to take questions now.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, any questions or comments from board members? Janet?
On the floodplain map, what does AE mean?
So, AE-
Is that a code, or?
It's a, it's a FEMA floodzone designation, um, and, I mean, it, it's not, it doesn't stand for something. Um, basically FEMA has two basic flood zones, uh, V would not relate here, they're coastal flood zones, so basically, an A, with the way FEMA defines flood zones is they'll, they'll give it this AE designation, and, and they'll provide an elevation. So if they say AE ten feet, they're saying, we, we expect that the, you know, floodwaters will reach ten feet, which is not ten feet above the ground, but whatever, but a, a ten-foot elevation.
And then when it says, because I was looking, say, where the schools are, some of the schools are, it said twenty-five, AE twenty-five percent, or AE zone twenty-five percent, I didn't know what that-
So, what that was-
I didn't know if it was good, bad, or what.
Well, so what that was indicating is that the part, those parcels are twenty-five percent in that AE flood zone. So if you, when, I know one of the possibilities is school combination, you presumably want to be looking at-
Right.
-what parcel's appropriate, and whether placement, if, if twenty-five percent is in a flood zone, then seventy-five percent isn't, so that is something you would-
You hope, okay.
-take, take into account.
And then my only other comment was that among the goals is you're looking for drought regulations for private well users, and, and I thought, anything having to do with pri- private well users is good, uh, because I'm one of the five percent of people who aren't in the Acton Water District, we're not Acton Water District customers, so, um, and it drives me crazy, because I see the signs in Acton and Concord, you know, all the Water District people have this restriction of the summer and watering, and in my neck of the woods, there are just, you know, people have private wells, and you have the people watering the street when it's raining outside with their sprinkler systems, and it just, and I'm, I, you know, we, I had this ongoing battle with my husband about our lawn, I said, "It will, it will turn brown, just leave it alone, it will come back, or if it doesn't, it's bad, and I'll find something else to grow." But, you know, we just, I don't really irrigate anything, except for new plants, you know, in the spring. And then, if they don't survive, then they're out, and I replace them, so. Um, and I, I would like to encourage more people, uh, in our area to do that sort of thing, to be sort of drought-sensitive, even though we have a lot more water than, say, they have in, in California, so, or they have zero scrape, scape types of things, which are interesting, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
Peter?
Uh, yeah, my question had to do with some of the data, um, and, uh, whether it's current or not, and I don't know, if you're building off a two thousand and ten plan, if you just continue to use that, but, for instance, on page thirteen, it talks about the community profile, it's got, according to the two thousand and ten census, nearly twenty-two thousand people live in Acton, there are eight thousand one hundred and eighty-seven housing units. Uh, we have another item on our agenda tonight, the Regional Housing Services, uh, Office that provides services to Acton. Um, there are in fact eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five, uh, housing units in Acton, so I don't know if you, if it's better for you to use more current data, I'm sure there's more than twenty-two thousand people also, uh, there were in two thousand and ten, but-
Right. Well, for the, I mean, I, it, certainly if there's data the town would prefer we use, we can, we can swap out data, in, in terms of the census, we won't be able to, it's twenty-ten or-
Right.
-not till twenty-twenty.
Well, we have more current data, though, it's not based on, the, town does a census every year, so, um, we certainly have that data, but-
Yeah, so, so I'll, I'm happy to look at that. Generally, we, we use the census, but it's not that we couldn't use-
Okay. I mean, I just, I, I just saw this for the first time Thursday night, unfortunately I missed the public forums, but on page fifty-five, you've got, you know, a table of existing land use from two thousand and five, I'm sure the town has more current information about that as well, but-
Yeah. Again, it's, that is state data that is slated to be updated, but hasn't been, so it, you're right, it's, it's not, it's, it's the most current data of that type available, but we could look at other possibilities.
Okay. So then, my only other question is really, this has come up in another context, and maybe you can answer it for me, but I'm, I'm understanding from another piece of work I'm doing, that FEMA has two flood zones, zones, a hundred-year flood zone and a five-hundred year flood zone. Is there such a thing as a floodplain as well? Does FEMA, does define a thing called a floodplain?
Well, you, there, so you're right about the, the hundred, the hundred year and the five-hundred years, those are sort of commonly known. There's also a floodway, which is, is really the, the primary stream or riverbed. Uh, the floodplain, I tend, I consider that to, usually people refer to that as, as that one percent or a hundred-year flood area. But I think floodplain is, is probably a less precise term.
Okay. Thank you. Good job.
Joan?
No, my question was about private wells.
Great. Joan?
No, I don't have any questions or comments.
Great. Um, I just wanted to start by saying thank you, it seemed like it was a lot of work to go through, so thank you all for doing that. I had a couple, one, um, I won't say I read this word-for-word super detailed, but I did notice that there's one errant reference to Littleton that should be in Acton, that I think was just, you guys probably reused for different towns.
Probably so.
So just checking through for that. Um, and then, um, there are references in here to two meetings with the Board of Selectmen, I, it seems to me, because then there were also these references to, you had one meeting with the Conservation Commission, and then one with the Board of Selectmen, but then it seems to reference, um, the two meetings with the Board of Selectmen, and now, I'm not sure, after your presentation, is that referring to the one now, and then you'll have the one when it's ready to be approved, or is it really that cons-con meeting, and then this one? Because it, that, I was referred both ways in there, and I got, I was like, "I don't think we've seen this before."
No, you have-
So I got a little confused.
So I will check on that, because I think it's meant to refer to the Conservation Commission meeting, because, because when it, when it comes back to you, it, it won't be a meeting, it will simply be a, a resolution for you to adopt.
Okay, okay.
So I will check on that, thank you.
Yeah, so I think just maybe clarifying that, it was one with Conservation Commission, one, one with the Board of Selectmen would be helpful. Um, and then I'd have to say, I have to say, when I was reading through this, I started to think, "Oh, you know, there's a lot of great stuff in here, but who's kind of in charge of all of this?" And then it was really great to get to the section where you sort of laid out, you know, uh, specific staff members or departments that would be in charge of each goal or, or issues, I really appreciate that. But my one question is, Cory, are you the one that's kind of in charge over all of the plan? Is there one designee kind of for the entire, um, plan, and to make sure everybody who's assigned to these pieces is, is doing that, or?
I don't think it's been discussed, but I've been kind of the point of contact-
Yeah.
-keeping it going, so, I could be the evolution of the person, just checking on negatively the steps of being taken, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because there were some really good, I think, concrete steps in here, so, and some that would require town meeting, or Board of Selectmen change, or things like that, so just making sure we're, you know, kind of still working towards getting those all done with, you know, in the five years, is, or, or longer, but, uh, as many as possible in the five years, it'd be really great, so. Um, but otherwise, thank you very much for putting this together, and I will open up to public comment or questions.
Jim Snyder Grant, eighteen Hef Moon Hill. Um, so just a little while ago, I sent some formal comments about the, uh, the draft hazard mitigation plan to the board. It's probably too recently for you guys to have seen it. Um, and I will certainly forward those on to, to Ann and to Cory, um, right away. Uh, I wanted to just summarize here, uh, for the record, and for those of you who are tired of, you know, reading all your emails. Um, so it was, it was a total delight to participate in that Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Community Resilience Building Workshop, um, and there was a, um, a really deep and multifaceted conversation, both on the presenters and from the small groups we broke into, about climate change. And so I, I was thrilled to see this Goal Nine added, "Consider the Potential Impacts of Future Climate Change and Incorporate Climate Sustainability and Resiliency in Hazard Mitigation Planning." But then, um, that, that meeting on May ninth was not even listed as a public meeting for this plan. I see now that it was described as a sort of a concurrent process that was happening. Um, I think that's a mistake, I think there's a, uh, at the very least, uh, the comments and information generated from that meeting should at least be comments in this plan, because they set us in a, in a new direction about thinking about, uh, climate change and hazards, uh, that was, that was very compelling to the people at that workshop. Um, I wanted to give a brief overview of some of what that meant, to give us a jumpstart on, um, incorporating sustainability, climate sustainability and resiliency in hazard planning. Um, this is where I'm going to try to summarize, because this went, this goes on for like nine points. Um, so, climate change, as Ann was noting, is going to mean a lot more droughts punctuated by large storms, so we're headed for a much stronger potential for water supply emergencies. Uh, water supply issues, as we've discussed it many times, are- Water supply issues, as we've discussed it many times, are regional issues. So we urgently need to find a way to work effectively with Concord and Littleton on Nagog Pond supply issues, in case we need that supply quickly. And if there is a regional drought, all the towns at once are going to want water. So planning now is what we need to do, not waiting until we need it. Most of the material at the workshop was talking about first-order climate effects, you know, climate changes are weather changes. But Acton's a pretty small town in the middle of regions and a planet that are also being affected by climate change. So if we're going to take the impacts of climate change seriously, we also have to think about second-order impacts. I've mentioned a few. When is that with flooding? You're going to have people no longer able to live along the coast who are living there now, particularly in the really crowded areas of Boston. So we're likely to see an influx of what we would call climate refugees over the next few decades. So we need to plan for that in our housing plans. Another thing that happens with climate change is that systems that are at all fragile are seriously challenged by the changes brought on by climate change. So we're likely to see disruptions in the supplies of energy, materials, food, and so on. So planning ahead about creating a situation in which the town of Acton and the region has enough area, for example, to grow the food it needs is wise and difficult. So that means that planning needs to start now. The other thing that's likely to happen is a second-order impact, either because of policy changes or because of shortages or both, is that fossil fuels are going to be a lot more expensive. So we started in some directions for planning for a future where fossil fuels are difficult or expensive, but there's a lot more to go, and that needs to be part of our planning. And there's obviously a lot of ways to do that, which I won't list. Some of the MVP workshop that was really fascinating for me and for a lot of people there focused on the map and geography and identifying particular areas of concern. So I wanted to mention a couple. So with the increased risk of flooding, when I see hazardous materials stored near water supplies and public streams, it has me shaking. So when I see places like, for example, Bursaw, storing a lot of fossil fuels right there next to the Shoggo Brook and right near next to a Zone 1 well, I think that's a situation that, because they're there by right and by permit, we can't change right away. So getting that hazardous material out of that area is, again, going to take time and cooperation. That has to start now. I think that's enough for now. The complete comments are being sent to you guys, and I'll try to get them up on the Green Acton website as well, so that the public can see them too. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. And I had meant to mention, this builds off a little bit of what Jim was talking about about flooding, is that it was good, if it was good timing or one of those that now I'm thinking about the issue. And so I hear, you know, I hear it more, and people have been talking about it all along. But there was a good story that I only heard part of this morning on WBR about a study out around the impact of flooding due to increased climate change and the anticipated impacts of that on a number of the coastal communities, including a lot of, as Jim mentioned, cities like Revere and Quincy and the impact that's going to have on the housing there and how much of the, they were talking specifically about the decrease in the property value due to flooding issues and the impact that will have on communities as well. So while that might not, you know, we're not on the coast and we're not probably going to experience that right away, but we will have a lot of people that can no longer live in these densely populated areas that are going to need other places to live. And communities are going to have to deal with this in a number of ways, including those. It was just an interesting take on the impact on property taxes in particular. So it's hopefully, I think, a lot of different ways to open people's eyes to these issues. So anyways, I'm hoping to find the full part of that. I only heard some of it this morning. But, yes.
Yes, I have a couple of questions and then some comments. The Gates School metrics, can you walk us, can you put that slide back and walk us through that? There were some numbers after the 25%.
Okay, is this where we are?
Yes.
And the schools, is that what you're asking about?
I guess that, when you say elementary schools, I guess you're looking at-
There's more details in the plan here, but this is not, this is not the time to talk specifically about the site for the Gates School or the Troy School.
No, I know. I just want to understand the numbers that they've got in this column. So 1% annual and the 10.64%. Can you just explain what that means?
So if you're reading across, it says 23% is in the 1% flood zone, 10%, and 10% is in the regulatory floodway, so that's sort of the closest to the stream. And again, I myself would have to look back at the plan. I think that might have been looking at multiple parcels, but it was sort of saying, you know, this is something to be aware of.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
In terms of placement.
Yeah. The next question is, I didn't notice anything in there about continuing to approve projects in flood zones. I thought that might be something to mention, because it seems to be a practice. And then, that leads me to the FEMA maps, because there seems to be these observable flood zones that are well beyond what the FEMA maps have. And I don't know if it's because they're old or because they got modified by developers, whatever it is. I feel like we need to respect what we can see. And the River Street, there's areas in town where we know it's floods. And so I feel like we need to be respectful of that.
That actually is very much part of this hazard mitigation process. If you, when you look at the plan, you'll see in the mapping at the end, one of the things, again, that the town committee did was identify areas of hazard. Flood, certainly one, could have been brush fire or other kinds of things, but basically circling places, this area floods, this area's floods may or may not be in a flood zone, isn't always.
So we should ask people who know about these observable flood zones to turn them in and to tell you guys about it.
Sure.
Is that right? Okay.
I mean, it happened also in the, I think people did some of that in the MVP workshop. And I guess I'd like to make a plug that we are doing on June 28th. There'll be an open meeting here to talk about the MVP workshop, summarize what happened, and also get people's input, so that's another chance.
Okay, since that, then, I feel like the draft is proactive. So it seems to accommodate human impact. And as Jim pointed out, it doesn't, like, there's nothing in there about like, "Hey, let's reduce the human impact and do our share," you know, just like you do your share for the migration. We do our share for lessening the impact of humans on the environment and reducing fossil fuels and things like that, and have it be a mandate as part of a resiliency plan, because we are doing a lot of that. I think that we stand as an example to the towns that aren't. It's also single-event oriented, it seems. Like, the human aspect of it is shelter beds, you know, let's react to this hurricane. And so I feel like long-term sustainability is part of resiliency too. The food security, I'm particularly concerned about, Jim had mentioned it, but the number of acres per person, we have already reduced the number of acres per person, so we're actually behind major cities. So major cities have more land preserved per capita than Acton does, despite all of our wonderful efforts. And so the more years that we let, you know, however many, 60, 80 acres get developed at the same time we're preserving one or two, we're getting further and further behind the eight ball. The migration figures that MAPC has been putting out is in the order of like 3,000 per town. Is that correct? I want to make sure I understood.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
150,000 people moving out past the Arlington space, is that right?
I don't know those figures.
I would love for you guys to actually do some quantitative, even if it's just guessing and these are preliminary, for us to understand how many people are coming.
Do you mean climate-related?
Climate-related, because there was an article in The Globe that said it might be 1.5 million instead of the 150,000 that MAPC is currently saying.
Okay, I don't think MAPC is, to my knowledge, we haven't done an analysis of climate migration.
Okay, I heard somebody say something. All right. Then, water risks in terms of the toxins, but also the quantity. So what we seem to be doing is we seem to be limiting people's water use, but not limiting the water hookups for new development. So we're not, seem to be taking care of ourselves or the people that are most vulnerable before we're taking care of developers. And then that leads into my almost last question, comment. The focus is on property and infrastructure and doesn't seem to call for networks of people. I have friends that are working on the Cambridge one, and they're calling for bike delivery systems for food and meals and library books. And I think that would be interesting to echo, because the more towns that put that stuff in, the more popular it grows. And then, I already said about facilitating growth, regulating the well use. Doesn't seem to be focusing on the environment, but it seems to be focusing on allowing more water hookups. So it's a water-taking for profit over people. And then the last thing I had to say is that the, we have a lot of waivers for things like stormwater, and I feel like you can't waive water away. And so I feel like we have to stop having waivers for the stormwater X. I just noticed like five or something like that, is that right? In the last, since we enacted it, which was one year? Anyway, to pay attention to those things and respect that waiving them because, you know, they're nice friends of the town or whatever, affordable, something, that we still have, the water's going to have to go someplace. So, thank you.
Great. Okay, any other comments from the audience?
Okay, and do you guys need anything from us tonight, or this was just an information update? Okay, great. Well, thank you again very much for all the work you've put into that, and we'll keep an eye out once it comes back to us. So, thank you so much, Anne.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, and Corey, I think finishing up you tonight is the transfer station bag replacement and cost.
This is going back to the Pay as You Throw program that we've done. We implemented it back in 2015 in the fall. We've had, we've had good success with the program so far. We've had good sort of enrollment with it and continuing doing the right thing. So as you know, the Pay as You Throw program that we use goes through a bag system. The cost of the bag that you're buying is covering the actual material cost of the bag, but also covering the cost of the handling of that material. So as you can see, we offer three kinds of bags, an 8-gallon, a 15-gallon, a 30-gallon. The most popular one that we buy is, people are buying us the 30-gallon. We originally chose that size in speaking with communities and the vendors. It was a size that people felt comfortable, didn't get too, too heavy, that people could lift it out of your car to put in the transfer station. As we've gotten into the, as we've gotten into the program, the good thing is, is you'll see the upper two lines with, sort of the two years prior. And then when we implemented the program, we saw about a 36% reduction in the trash. And these are sort of the three years of the program since we've implemented it. That green line there, that was the start of the program, so that was sort of the uprising of sort of cleaning out before the program started. So it's been good, I mean, the good thing is we've seen a slight reduction in the stickers, but the reduction in the trash kind of far out raised what we've seen that way. So it's gone well. I'd say the different comments and the feedback that we've gotten back, the one that we continually hear from a lot of people is the size of 30-gallon bag. Most people that speak with us, their desire for the 30, for the large bag is to line their trash barrel and then toss their kitchen trash bags into it and then come to the dump. The 30-gallon is just slightly small enough. I've tried it on my trash barrel and I'm able to get it on, but it is a very tight fit. It doesn't necessarily touch the bottom. And a lot of people were commenting about the size bags that Littleton had and a couple of other communities, so. Those communities are using 33-gallons, so they're slightly, a little bit wider, a little bit taller. So we've, what we did was in speaking with our vendor, we ordered like two or three cases of a 33-gallon bag. The staff down there handed it out to people that he was speaking with that had a desire to have a larger bag. And I think predominantly everybody was in favor of that size. What we were doing was we were measuring trash barrels so we could find to see roughly what it was and trying it out. I mean, there's a few that, they're just not going to fit, they're just much larger. But I'd say it's sort of the traditional barrels you see that are the 32-gallon. It's still a snug fit going over the top, but it generally holds it. So if you're dumping your trash into it, it holds, it doesn't collapse in, and it isn't touching the bottom of the barrel. So it was generally well-received by sort of the small pilot program that we just put out just to see what people thought was. So we were, what we were proposing to do, right now we still have an inventory of 30-gallon bags, so if you were okay with it, what we're going to do is sort of run that 30-gallon sort of bag inventory down, and then we'll replace those with the 33-gallon. When we looked at the numbers and the cost of that, the 33-gallon bag would be about $1.75 per bag for the, sort of the extra three gallons of trash for the weight. So we're sort of here tonight to request that and see what you-
Great, thanks, Corey. And just before I open to questions, I just want to confirm, we're not, normally we have one meeting a year where we kind of approve the whole costs for the transfer station, but we will do that later in the summer.
Yeah, we'll still make it in the same system.
Exactly. So I just want, if people had questions about that, we will have another meeting on that. Okay, questions or comments from board members? Janet?
So how long do you think it will take to run down the 30-gallon bag supply?
When I spoke to them about three weeks ago, I think they had a, they had about a 16-week supply. They have sort of the normal process where they, they don't want to get too low and then they can't get the manufacturer in line. So I have to check with them again to make sure they didn't produce more, but they knew we were considering this tonight, so they might try to hang on a little bit just so they don't produce a mass supply and then we're stuck for months.
Well, I don't care, because I have almost intact supply of 30-gallon bags that I never used, because I use my favorite size, it's the 8-gallon bag, fits in the kitchen. And then sometimes I have Dunleavy's bags that I can't use and I empty the trash basket, because I put all our food scraps in a bucket in the freezer and I compost it. Or I take the other bucket, I have a little bucket, other bucket in the freezer, I take that to the transfer station. So this is a history I have going back to my parents, because we, my father was determined to keep the animals out of the garbage. And the only solution he found that worked was to, was to keep the food out of the garbage cans. And so it started when I was a kid and I've continued with it, but it works pretty well. But I, as a result, I mean, I just don't have that. We don't generate that much trash. So I use 8-gallon bags every couple of weeks I go to the transfer station. And 15-gallon bags, I just, sometimes I consolidate things and then I feel bad. I'm using two 8-gallon bags and sticking them into it. What a waste of money. But, you know, it just, it's a great system, so I mean, I will never use the 33-gallon bag. I have the 30-gallon bag hangs kind of on three corners in our trash barrel. And every once in a while, my husband, he throws everything in there and I get angry at him, because I say, "I don't want to use too many of them, you know, I want to save the big bag just to line the trash barrel." So, so don't, but anyhow, but yeah, so it's fine, it's good. It's interesting that the bag I use the most of is the one that's the least popular. I need to buy more of them, I guess, so. But thank you very much. I think it's a great system and we haven't heard any complaints from people who say they want to go back to "don't pay as you throw."
Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, I look forward to the 33-gallon. I've lost too many fingernails trying to get it over.
Okay, questions or comments from the audience?
I would just like to put a shout-out for composting by right, because the apartment buildings, like 3,000 people, actually 2,000 housing units can't compost. The health department has called it a health risk and calling it garbage instead of compost. But I wanted to ask, because I always tell people, how many tons do you think, just to estimate? I couldn't read the figures. How many tons have we diverted with the program?
Just looking at the, sort of the pre-years, which were '13 and '14, we were averaging a little over 3,400 tons a year.
Extra that we wouldn't-
No, that's total.
Oh, that's total.
Yeah. And then sort of the post, the post of the program starting, I'm looking at between 2,200 to 2,500- between twenty-two hundred to twenty-five hundred tons, so we're in the name of a thousand tons.
Per year?
Per year.
Diverted?
Yes.
Thank you. And then the last comment was just that the price increase would be, the, the size of the, the bag would be increased by ten percent, but the price would be fifteen percent, so just putting a plug in for lower pricing.
Great, I think it's great, you know, I'm a huge fan of pay as you throw. I don't, I live in an apartment, but I, apartment, people who live in apartments can compost, 'cause you can compost at the transfer station. So I still do all of my recycling, the recycling sticker, and you're allowed to compost there as well, as well as use the swap shop. So we have a, I've not been home in four weekends, so I have a mountain of recycling and swap shop materials and compost in my freezer, but people can do that, and I encourage folks, even if you live in an apartment, or even if you have trash and you don't wanna compost on your own, you can get a pretty cheap recycling only sticker and still be allowed to do all of the other many great things that you can do at the transfer station. Okay, so otherwise, do we have a motion to approve? So move?
Second.
Okay, Janet moves and Jo- Joan, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great, all right, thank you Cory, I think that's finally it for you. Okay, and up next is the appraisal discussion for two fifty-two, two fifty-two R and two fifty-six Main Street. So Selby and Andrew, Steve, I don't know if you're tag teaming that. Yes, go ahead, sorry.
So in your packet is a quote from John Avery for an appraisal of the Kmart Plaza, owned by Stock and Shop. If you read through it, he says is not taking into, into consideration the lease, there's about, a little under three years left on the lease to Kmart by Stock and Shop, so he's not gonna take that into consideration in the valuation of this, under this proposal. That's pretty much, this is a product of a citizens petition at town meeting, and in a discussion with John Benson and Peter Berry, they both said it was a good idea, so I went ahead and got a quote, and the price is just under seven thousand dollars.
Great, great, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? Peter?
I know we knew, I, I know the town uses John Avery a lot to do appraisals. I assume the price is reasonable, but did you solicit any other quotes, or is it okay to go with one quote? Yeah, I understand that, but does it make good fiscal sense to ask for three quotes?
Steve, can you use, sorry? You only got one more meeting than you was.
I'm old, I don't remember. When we've had a conflict, when, when, when Mr. Avery has represented some other owners and we've gone out, they're all priced about the same, really.
Okay, any other questions, Joan?
Yeah, I think this is information we, we really need, and John Avery can do an excellent job. I've never met him, I've used him and other lawyers have used him in my old practice area, family law, and, and his work was excellent. And more to the point, lawyers would hire him as a third party neutral, because his work was so balanced and fair, and I think we'll get a, a real good report from him.
Great. Okay, Janet?
I just, I know we were emailing something else, but I, I just wanted to note that this doesn't mean, whatever the results are of this, it doesn't mean that we're committing to, to doing anything with the parcel. We're just finding out what the appraised value is, so, for future, I mean, it could be useful in a number of ways.
Right, yeah, I'll agree, this is just an information gathering in a response to the town meeting non-binding resolution, but I do not think in any way it commits us to anything, or to saying that we approve of or support buying this parcel, it's information gathering. Okay, questions or comments from the audience?
Terriford, it's West Acton, thank you for moving on this. It's a good mark to show that we respect town meeting's votes. I couldn't hear what you were saying, Selby, you said somebody said that you talked to some people and thought it was a good idea, I didn't, couldn't hear what you were saying when you were leading up to it.
It was at a meeting with John Benson and Peter Berry.
Okay.
Sitting on the porch of the Colonial Inn after having lunch with Chris Starr and Chris Bailey on May eleventh, two thousand eighteen at approximately two o'clock PM.
Great.
Too much information.
They all thought it was a good idea? I was trying to understand, I didn't make it to that meeting? Didn't even know about it.
It wasn't a public meeting nor would it have happened, so.
I think what you're saying is that you felt, you talked to a couple people and you felt like, generally speaking, people thought it was a good idea. So, of course, I'm gonna put a pitch in for a public market, I don't know if anybody's looked at what that is, I forgot to send you the link, I'll send you the link for what public, these public markets are popping up everywhere and they're really, really popular. There's tons of vendors inside, it's like a big huge flea market with food courts and performance spaces and all kinds of things going on. Eighty percent of people in the survey I did wanted this and it kind of mirrored the vote that happened at town meeting. But the reason I stood up was really to ask, because the town meeting vote, I had said it would probably cost like twenty thousand dollars to do this appraisal, because John said very conservatively with, you know, like no notice, he said, you know, about twenty thousand would be conservative. And that's what I told town meeting, and we got the eighty-two percent voting for this. So I'm hoping that since it's only seven thousand, that you can ask him to do a second appraisal of what the parcels would cost after the proposed rezoning. Because that way we'll know if we've added, if we would add millions of dollars to the value of the property, that we then could perhaps make the zoning a little bit different, so that we can actually get what we want and need, as opposed to the developer dictating what they can do with the poor woes of economic viability. I feel like we need to get a better handle on what we can actually get, and so I think that'll, if we got that information, we'd know what the vote would mean. Thank you.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve this request?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Peter moves and Janet seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great, thank you very much, Selby. All right, up next is the RHSO amendment and FY nineteen budget. Yes, you can sit here or there, wherever is more comfortable for you.
I, I guess here, so I can see you all.
Yeah, great.
I think that there's a presentation in your packet, and I think it's coming up on the screen. Lisa's doing that. So just very quick, while she's getting that up, I'm Liz Rust, and I'm the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office, and we're here for the annual update for the intermunicipal agreement, and this is a presentation that was done for the town managers at their annual meeting. So I just wanted to start, there's, there's eight communities in the Regional Housing Services Office, of which seven town managers are retiring in the next year of the eight communities, leading off with Acton, always the trendsetter. So it was real. Yeah. So it'll be a, a time of change for all the communities in many ways, and, and, and I don't really know for the, for the RHSO as well. So we've offered to, as new town managers come on board, to facilitate and help them understand this arrangement and what it is the RHSO does, 'cause it's a little bit different. The service model here in the package, I think that this is a review really for, for you. I think I presented to some number of this board before, but some of you are new and that's, but the boards are always turning over. This is the service model where all the communities join through the intermunicipal agreement. It's a three-year term that is amended annually, just so that you have the opportunity to ask questions and hear from the, the members of the staff. And Concord is the lead community, that means that they do all the procurement, we are all, there are four people in the office, and we contract through Concord, and you're, that's seamless to you, so it's really, in some ways, a procurement model to, to procure affordable housing services. And we do any number of services that are listed there on the left, some monitoring, inventory management, and as I said, Concord really manages all of the logistics with that and our computers and phones and, and rent and facilities. So we, in terms of, we have some member support, so support that we would provide to Acton specifically, and then things that are general for, for all the communities. We have a website that many people use, and that's www.rhsohousing.org, and so that there's information about the Acton affordable housing and inventory, as well as general resident assistance. We do trainings and we do the monitoring work. So across the towns, almost three million dollars was appropriated towards housing at recent town meetings, and this is a very high level of all the towns, the support that was given in Acton. We spend a lot of time with the planning department, looking at the various housing proposals. I'm gonna skip through all these other towns, whoops. I skipped way ahead somehow. There we go. So this is what I call the RHSO work plan, and this has all the different pies of our activities. I'm not gonna go through this, but as I say, that we spent a lot of time with Acton on the, the forty B developments this year in particular, we've spent a lot of time on Martin Street. The town is the monitoring agent for there, so we're helping the planning board with some of those activities. And then for FY nineteen, you know, again, we'll continue to support the member communities and maintain our office. So we are now, actually in Acton, our office is in Acton on Knox Trail, we have a very complicated address that if you send us something by UPS, you use the Acton address, if you send something by USPS, you use the Concord address. So it's very confusing for us, right? But anyway, so we're, we're gonna stay there. There was a model where every three years it was thought that we would move to different offices, and that's no longer the case. Concord's agree that it makes sense for us just to stay in the same office. So this is information about the hours, it's really a model, even though, you know, you're paying the dollars for, for membership, it really translates into billable hours for us, that's how we work and how we're contracted. So this is just a lot of, a lot of detail on how we arrive at the numbers for the different communities. And this is how that looks in terms of dollars. I think Acton is very close to the same as last year, as I recall, right? Yes, almost exactly, no, looks like nine hundred dollars difference. So it's, it's relatively the same in terms of level of support. And this was particular to the town manager meeting, we're gonna do some, a reserve in our budget, and then talking about Knox Trail as a permanent location. And then we've been in operation for seven years, and so this was just a, sort of a summary of thanking the member towns for that continued support. We feel that it's a sustainable model, we've added communities, I think Acton has now been a member for four years, maybe five tops, I think probably four. Communities have left, we've added staff, we've changed staff, so it seems to continue to provide service to the communities, and that's our greatest interest to, of course, to provide value to all the member communities. We have enjoined this year, so we're just starting that process with them. I think that's it, and then the rest of the material is the actual agreement.
Great, excellent, okay, any questions or comments from members of the board? Janet?
Well, I just, I wanna thank you, Liz, I think that it's a great, it was a great improvement when we agreed to participate in this, and we've continued to finance our participation in it, because, well, as, as the liaison to the Acton Community Housing Corporation, which really used to handle all this themselves, I, I can vouch for the fact that it's just you, you guys handle a lot of details that it would have been impossible for the ACHC to handle, and you've just, you've caught a lot of things and, you know, just sort of managed a lot of things that, yeah. It's just much more information. What I also like is that we, we get to see what other communities are doing, like Sudbury was really busy, I guess, in the past year, I probably have some big forty Bs or something. I have a question, and then I, by the way, you added in this increased two thousand, sort of in the budget, you know, sort of increasing the hourly rate by whatever sixty-three cents account for that, that's fine with me, it makes sense. What is, what are these thirteen A preservation projects? Are they existing affordable complexes that are getting renovated? There's one in Bedford and one in Lexington or something.
Exactly, so thirteen A was a Mass Housing, Housing Finance Program that started really in the seventies, and it had a, what they call expiring use. So the projects that were funded through that, the, the affordable housing restrictions expired after thirty years, so that as the units are expiring, it was a very popular program, many, many units were subsidized with that program. The owner of the property able to sell the property at market value, thus losing a lot of the affordability and affordable housing units. And I think in the hundreds of thousands of units across the state under that program. So both Lexington and Bedford had projects or units restricted under that program and were able to preserve those, so the owner is selling the property, the new owner buying and buying with, preserving the affordable housing restriction, or increasing it even in some cases.
And my only comment is that the RHSO office has the same situation that I do. I have a, I have a Concord mailing address, and, and, you know, I have to tell the delivery people that I'm in Acton. I've given up, I think they know, FedEx just knows, I, I've, Concord Mass, just, you know, and they know there's that funny street that's actually in Acton, where you have to deliver stuff, and, because it was just, it was getting too complicated. But yeah, my, my legal address is Acton, but my mailing address is Concord. Believe you me, it created complications when I was campaigning, you know, and I thought, what's my return address on my campaign literature? Oh, I better put Acton, and then that means it adds two days to the, to the transit time, so, but thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Great, any other questions or comments, Peter?
Just in terms of the actual services you provide, the Acton Housing Authority is responsible for certifying their residents' income and the rent they pay. So what services do you provide to the housing authority itself?
The housing authority has a number of units that are regulated under the, the DHCD Local Initiative Program, and the town is obligated to certify those units to the state, so we work with the housing authority and provide that certification for the town.
Okay, and, and for forty Bs, ownership programs, do you actually monitor the registry of deeds if somebody sells that, or are they supposed to come to you first and say, we wanna sell this property, and, and you calculate what the new sale price is supposed to be, or how, how do you deal with that?
So I think there's a number of parts, so forty B ownership units that have already been sold and are, the owners are living in them. Every year we look through the registry of deeds, Acton has sixty-three of those units, and we go through the registry of deeds and we send out self-certifications to every owner, making sure that they say that they're still in compliance with their, with their unit. Acton is also the designated monitoring agent for a number, a small number of units, and so we report to Mass Housing for the town on those behalf. And when people wanna sell, we facilitate the conversation between the owner and the monitoring agent. Sometimes that's the town, sometimes that's DHCD.
Yeah.
And help them, and then help the town provide consents for refinancing or compliance certificates or whatever. We are often working with Steve's office to complete that paperwork.
Okay, and, and there is no income restriction on a forty B homeownership, right? If somebody gets a great job after living there for a few years and doubles their income or something, they're still eligible to continue to live there as long as they.
Right, those are deed properties.
Right.
So, so, you know, you own the deed, and once you own the deed, it's a legal deed, and, yeah.
Okay, then I just had some questions about the charts here. I mean, you got the budget that you showed us, I think. But there's another chart here called the budget after, unfortunately, there are no page, oh, I guess it's on page, no, like, there's no page numbers, it's after the Acton contract. Doesn't seem to be consistent with the budget you had.
Is it this, is this one right here?
Nope.
No?
That's not it. I think it's after that, it's a. It's after all the signatures for all the towns, I guess.
This one right here?
Uh, yeah.
Uh-huh.
So you don't have the, I looked at that first and I saw the $1,720 increase. That was like a 10% increase. But you don't have the adjustment that's in the first chart.
Oh, so the FY18 comparison does not have the adjustment hours. That's correct. So the adjustment, this is a 1,320.
Which is in the first chart.
Right, so that just happened in May, and you can see this one was done in April.
Oh, that was earlier.
So Acton purchased additional hours in May.
That was an attachment to the contract, is that what that was? Or something?
Yeah, and this was relative, really, the focus of the presentation is about FY19.
Right.
So FY18, you know, is changing on a daily basis, you know.
So it's actually only a $400 increase for Acton?
900, I believe, right? 24093 to 244, oh, 4, yes, thank you, yes. Sorry.
That's what the chart says?
Yes, no, the text is small, I couldn't see that. Yes.
All right, and you got 20,000. It goes from 8,000 to 20,000 administrative. Did you move there already? Are you in that space?
So the administrative fee goes to the town of Concord, and it's traditionally $15,000 or has been in the past. And last year there was a year-end kind of mix-up where some of the FY18 monies were actually spent in FY17. So it wasn't, it looks like it was only, you know, 8,000. It was really allocated as 15, so it was over the year before. So it represents a $5,000 increase to the town of Concord for additional overhead.
For moving expenses?
No, just additional overhead in terms of, you know, maybe some rent and IT expense and.
Okay, so where is the moving expense? You say moving is expensive and disruptive.
So we moved in this year FY18.
That was in the admin. Was that taken out of the admin money?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Great, thanks. Any other questions, John or Joan? Nope, okay. Just thank you very much. The work that you do is really great, and as you mentioned, has been a really great program for us to be a part of, doing this regionally. So I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the audience?
Just before you, just let me mention generally that the town pays for this out of the CPC CPA fund, so it comes out of the affordable housing pot that the CPC runs.
Correct. Yep, thank you, Peter. Okay.
Tara Fredericks Westdaken, and thank you very much. I love the fact that we're doing this regionally. My issues I have are with the infographic, and I can talk to you privately offline if you'd like, but I do want to make people aware of my thoughts on this, and I've talked to several people in Green Acton who are also concerned. Some of these things are very misleading. For example, the first thing, it talks about 24% of all households have low incomes, right? So that may be, but 80% of those are not satisfied by 40B, and the, this infographic appears to end with, that's why we need more construction. It doesn't talk to converting units. There's, let's see, one of these things say, renter occupied units are less likely to include children. Well, of course, rented units have fewer bedrooms. The sales prices are rising faster than income, so if you take out the mansions, then you see a different tracking. And so there's lots of distortions in here that I feel like need to get reworked before this is put on the town website, and yet there it is on the town website without any review or commenting relative to accuracy and making sure it's not misleading. There's senior median income, $60,000, great, but that's enough to afford any of the townhouses around here. So I feel like we need to really look at this if we're going, like, what is the goal of it? You know, I understand that we hired the consultant to convince us to approve more high-density zoning, but again, here, our taxes are then paying for something that I feel like is misleading, and we need to decide what is the goal of it. You know, if you said that the goal was to, you know, get money out of town meeting to buy up thousands of condos, you know, I would say that this would be right in line with that type of strategy. But whereas it ends in with not doing that, then, you know, and with all due respect, you guys are actually looking at the possibility of helping us or facilitating a condo buy-down program, because if like ACHC doesn't want to do it, there's lots of other housing trusts. That's why I didn't know you guys actually help facilitate cross-town, like Sudbury Housing Trust does the lottery, is a lottery agent for the West Concord units.
Okay, wait, Tara, you need to address the board. This is not the time to do that.
Sorry. So the regional, regionality or the regional solution is good. I think that we have to also be converting units in large scale instead of just sort of making up things that lead people to believe that they need to build more. Thank you.
Okay. Sure, Janet.
Tara, I really don't appreciate your sort of condescending comments to the RHSO representative. I really don't like the way that you're saying that this material she's presented is misleading and that her role is to force, force people to authorize more, more development of housing. I think that's very disrespectful and inappropriate.
Tara, no, wait.
No, I really do.
Tara, that's not how this is going to work. I will let you know when you can respond.
You know, I'm just really, you know, if you have agreements, you address it to us, okay? And, but you, you know, you're just really condescending toward somebody who's working for the town and are, at least in my view, is doing a very good job. And it is all for the benefit of the town. There's not some sort of conspiracy behind the scenes with all these consultants trying to just line their pockets. This is all in the interests of the town. I know you don't believe that, but that's your belief and you're entitled to it, so.
And I will note this, that Acton comes up with our policy related to how we want to address housing. The RHSO is here to help us with monitoring and implementing that policy. They do not develop, develop that policy for us, so it's not correct to direct that kind of accusations towards the RHSO. So I will let you briefly respond, and that's that.
Okay, I am addressing my comments to the Board of Selectmen, and I apologize if you guys did the infographic, but the information came from Acton, maybe that's the case. But either way, I feel like we as a town have to decide what type of solutions we want to engage in. When you do the surveys, and 90% of the people say they want to convert existing units, but then, you know, the solutions that come out are almost 90% in the complete opposite way to build. And so I would like very much a process by which we can address these issues about this infographic, because it seems inappropriate to, you know, whoever created it. I thought you did because you put it on the, in the report, it said to create infographics. But I feel like it's, they're inaccurate and misleading. So I hope that in the spirit of good governance, that we sit down somehow and go over why these things seem so misleading. And, you know, maybe Green Acton Land Use Committee can be a leader in that, or maybe one of you guys would like to sit down and understand. But we've got, I've got an alternative survey, I've got an alternative infographic that shows in red why each item is, I'm going to put it out. If you guys don't want to address this stuff, we have to get the information to people about what is going on behind the, you know, the scenes and how this stuff is coming out. Because that, just 10 seconds more, that consulting, consultant gig actually said in it, you can read the RFP, it is on the DocuShare, it says that they're being hired to go and find more votes for the town meeting.
That's not the direct quote, so don't say.
All right, it's not a direct quote, sorry.
So don't say that. So I'm going to ask you to end here.
Okay, thank you.
And Tara, you can, it's fine if you, you can disagree, but it doesn't mean that other people are wrong. And so saying to us that we have to sit down and, you know, hear the facts because we somehow don't have them is frankly insulting, and I'm not letting you respond to this. So don't, so it's not appropriate to say that to the board, and it's not true. It's insulting to the board, to town staff and to others that we work with and hire. So while you might disagree, it doesn't mean that we're wrong. Okay, so with that, we need a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement for the RHSO for FY19.
So moved.
Okay, Janet is moved, Joan is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. Okay, thank you very much for coming in tonight. Okay, so the last item on our agenda is committee reappointments. I will read this list. If you have any concerns about anyone, please say hold, and I will hold that. Karen Myers for the Acton Boxborough Cultural Council, Jennifer, I did not read these names beforehand, I apologize to everybody whose name I'm about to say incorrectly. Jennifer Patinoe of the Acton Community Housing Corporation. It says Charles, but Charlie Cadillac for the Acton Nursing Services Advisory. We have a little upset there. Ellen Feinsand of the Acton Nursing Services Advisory Committee, Adrian Hancock, Acton Nursing Service Advisory Committee, Florence Ross, Acton Nursing Service Advisory, Jean Lane, Acton Nursing Service Advisory, Howard Sussman, Acton Nursing Service Advisory. Adam Hoffman, Board of Appeals, Susan C. Miller, Board of Assessors, Michael Cruz, Board of Health, William R. Taylor, Board of Health, John Covert, Cable Advisory Committee, Elizabeth Franklin, Commission on Disability, Ann Corcoran, Commission on Disability, Frances Osman, Commission on Disability, Walter Foster, Community Preservation Committee, Dean Charter, Community Preservation Committee, Terry Maitland, Conservation Commission, Paula Goodwin, Conservation Commission, Marion Maxwell, Council on Aging, Bonnie Lobel, Council on Aging, Jaclyn Friedman, Council on Aging, Ellen Feinsand, Council on Aging, Peter Darlow, Design Review Board, Tom Gillespie, Dog Park Committee, Betsy Crystal, Dog Park Committee, Mike Perry, Dog Park Committee, Claire Siska, Dog Park Committee, Karen Martin, Dog Park Committee, Josh Fischel, Economic Development Committee, Shirley Ming, Economic Development Committee, Cameron Cousins, Green Advisory Board, Mona Chandra, Green Advisory Board, Fran Arsenal, Historic District Commission, Victoria Byer, Historical Commission, Jim Snyder Grant, Land Stewardship Committee, Lawrence Olman, Land Stewardship Committee, Robert Guba, Land Stewardship Committee, Gary Kilpatrick, Land Stewardship Committee, Nan Millet, Land Stewardship Committee. I'm just going to read all of these that are the Land Stewardship Committee. Philip Keys, Andy Gatesman, Joshua Haynes, Sherman Smith, Todd Securus, James Salem, Jason Temple, and Jazana Gruber, All Land Stewardship Committee, Bill Mullin, Ann Chang, and David Brown for the Main Street Master Plan Committee, Joe Will for the Recreation Committee, Steve Barrett, Nancy Gerhart, Carol Mahoney for the Senior Disabled Taxation Aid Committee, James Yarren and James Citro for the Transportation Advisory Committee, and Ron Beck for the Water Resources Advisory Committee. Okay, Joan, you held, Betsy Crystal.
Before we get to Joan's, Tammy Govea was left off.
Tammy chose not to re-up, so she should not be.
So then I should take that.
Yeah. Okay, Joan, do you want to just briefly say why you held that?
Yeah, we're trying to meet.
Can you just put, sorry?
We're trying to meet with Betsy.
Okay, yep, there's just some, you just want to talk to her before reappointing her to the committee is a concern. Okay. So does anybody have any questions or concerns with that? And otherwise, can I have a motion to approve all of the reappointments as presented outside of Betsy Crystal?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Great, all right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, we have two motions. I'm going to count Joan's as a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And congratulations, Mr. Manager.
Um.
Oh, well, we just adjourned, Franny, so you can talk to us privately, but.
I was.
Yep, sorry.